Good evening, everyone. We will call the September 16, 2013 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is the roll call. Heidi.
Estes, Peterson, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Scott, Nordstrom, Roberts, Clayton, Laurenti. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And we will now proceed with the invocation and we'll recognize Vicki French from the Agape Spiritual Center. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
How grateful I am for this country. How grateful I am for this very state of South Dakota. How grateful I am for Rapid City, for the mayor, for the council members, for all the staff members, and for the citizens of this beautiful state. Coming from the place of wisdom, divine intelligence, harmony and balance known as the one presence and the one power, that is the very activity of life itself, I bless the events that are taking place today. I bless this entire country as it steps forward into the next journey of the next step as the events continue to unfold in Washington, DC. I bless all of the families affected. I bless all of the families in Rapid City today who are affected by all of the decisions that are made here in peace, in harmony, as ease and grace, as the very activity of these citizens who come forward with their call. I give thanks then for all of the calls of everyone who has stepped forward into this sacred service to serve this state, to serve this city, to save each and every citizen. And so as I give thanks to the infinite, to the one presence and the one power, I just bless the events that take forward today and all the decisions that come forward in peace. And so it is. Amen.
Thank you very much, Vicki. We will now proceed with the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to tonight's agenda from council members or staff? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as is? Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. All in favor say aye? Oppose? Motion carries. We will now proceed with item number one, which is Veteran of the Month. And if our Ward five council member present could join me down front along with Jamison Doherty. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the September 2013 Veteran of the Month recognition to Jamison D. Doherty.
Jamison D. Doherty served in the United States Air Force for six years at Ellsworth Air Force Base. There he was an avionics test station and components craftsman. After his separation from the Air Force, Mr. Doherty began to volunteer at the Rapid City Vet Center where he became a valuable member of their team. Mr. Doherty assists other veterans with benefit questions, veteran organization referrals, and general veteran-related questions. He coordinates the morning and afternoon shuttle services for veterans heading to Fort Meade and Hot Springs Veterans Administration. His dedication ensures quality care is provided to the veterans and their families. Having served this country with pride, honor, and integrity, Jamison Doherty is a patriot of our country and his community. He is deserving of the Veteran of the Month. Thank you, Jamison, for your service.
I don't have much to say. I just want to thank all my coworkers and friends for their support. Also, the City of Rapid City for their support of all the veterans. And I'd like to thank all veterans, past, present, and future.
Is Terry here, Police Department? Come on up, Terry. And also our Assistant Chief, Carl Jagras. Terry, we'd like to take a moment tonight to thank you for your dedicated 25 years of service to the city. And now Assistant Chief Carl has a few comments to make.
Well, we have appreciated having Terry around the department for over 25 years now. She started as a clerk in our records section, and then rather quickly moved to our Criminal Investigations Division where she's been for a majority of her career with us. So she has more institutional knowledge of the investigations function than most of the staff there because she's been there longer than all of them. So whenever we have an issue, come up, you know, do you remember that old case from a couple of decades ago? Usually if we go to Terry, we can find out the info pretty quick. So thank you for 25 years, and we look forward to many more.
And Ron Estes. Ron, we want to take a moment to thank you for your many years of service to our community. And I heard a rumor that you're retiring because someone with the same last name had been elected to the City Council. But I've been informed today that that's not the case. So Carl.
On the way in, Ron's wife mentioned that this is actually his second retirement. And he came to us 22 years ago to the Rapid City Police Department, but prior to that, he served in the United States Air Force and retired as a major, last stationed at Ellsworth as a meteorologist for the Air Force. So we quickly latched on to that technical skill 22 years ago and hired him. And I should mention that along the way, when he was in the Air Force, he got his master's degree from Texas A&amp;M. So he was quite a hire for us. And for the past 22 years, he's been our crime analyst, helping us to analyze where our crime problems are so that we can more appropriately, efficiently, and effectively deploy our resources and many other things. And he also served as our accreditation manager. So I want to thank you for the past 22 years of service. And most importantly, I should mention, he's just a really nice guy, and we all appreciate him at the Police Department. So congratulations on your retirement and good luck.
Bonnie, would you like to come up here and join me? Have my lovely bride come up here and stand beside me? On behalf of my wife and I, I would just like to thank the Chief Jagras and the Rapid City Police Department for the opportunity to serve the community for these past 22 years. It's been a real privilege for us. And I can only comment that 22 years ago was mighty fast. And so I hope the next however many years the Lord blesses me with doesn't go quite that fast. So thank you very much.
Just for the record, I want to acknowledge that Councilman Peterson has joined us. Thank you.
Welcome, Bonnie.
I was at a Central States Fair meeting that was still going when I left to come. Thank you.
All right, we are now on to general public comment. Do I have any speaker request forms for general public comment? So we will move on to non-public hearing items, and we'll open public comment for consent items three through 23. Public comment is now open. Do I have any speaker request forms for items three through 23? Am I missing anyone? Seeing none, public comment is now closed for items three through 23. And are there any council members that would like to move items from the consent calendar, items three through 23? We'll first go to Bonnie Peterson.
And number 23, please.
Number 23, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remove items number four and number 19, please.
Four and number 19. Any additional items to be removed? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Doyle to approve the balance of consent. Items three through 23, with the exception of four, 19, and 23 for separate consideration. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is a request by Renner and Associates LLC for a vacation of right-of-way for property generally described as being located northeast of Universal Drive, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti to approve, and we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. The only reason I pulled this was to abstain from this vote. Thank you.
So noted. We'll now proceed to the vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Amanda Scott. We're now on item number 19, and we'll go to our Legal and Finance Chairman, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 19 is to acknowledge the parking meter signage changes for Sixth Street Parking Ramp, and I move up to acknowledge.
We have a motion to acknowledge. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Peterson, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of this. I understand it's going to help with some congestion and free up some space, but if you wouldn't mind, I would like to ask Mr. Dan Seifner some questions for clarification on this issue.
You may. Come on up, Dan.
Hi, Dan. I know that the downtown area keeps getting busier and busier, and I understand this is a way to try to promote more, but I know it came as unfamiliar information for me. Would you please expound and let the public know what we're doing in that parking ramp, please?
Yes. I'm Dan Seifner, President of Destination Rapid City. And the best problem we could ever have is a parking problem. There's nothing I'd rather have than someone to come up to me and say, you know what, Dan, there's just nowhere to park. Because I've been in Rapid City nearly 40 years, and I remember the way it was in a time that was much different than it is today. So what we are looking at, and Alderman Wright and I will go back on this a little ways, when we first talked about moving the meters to the main floor or putting parking meters on the main floor, and I remember Alderman Wright making the statement, well, Dan, why don't we just put them all down on the main floor? It's where our customers park. It's where the people who shop in downtown Rapid City belong. They should have first right for parking. Right now, in speaking real closely with Loanne and Terry, who are parking enforcement gals downtown every single day, they're saying the confusion of some meters on second floor, some meters on first floor, get a little bit like the tourists, the visitors are not quite sure, even some of the locals get a little confused with what's going on. So what this does is this adds that customer parking to the main level. We can then label everything on the main level as customer parking. Destination Rapid City has agreed to pick up the tab of all the signage, all the new meters, all the installation, everything that needs to be done to put all the parking on the main level of the ramp at no cost to our taxpayers and no cost to the city. So everything there would be moving forward at a rate that just seems to make sense for maximum use of our parking ramp and less confusion. When we do get to signage, when we do start to look at that, once again, I've talked to Loanne and Terry, and I want them involved to help with the guidance since they walk the street every day and they walk the ramp every day, and I do not, although I'm there a lot. I want them to be upfront as to saying, Dan, here's what we need, here's how we should do this, and so forth and so on. And I've also talked to John Les with City about parking signage and so forth. So we're working very closely to make sure that everybody's connected, everybody's involved. I've spoken with the Assistant Chief. We've tried to inform everyone possible as to what we can do here, and what we're looking for is permission to move forward to make this happen, and we'd like this done by November 1st, if but all possible.
Thank you, Dan. And I also understand that it will not affect any of the currently leased patrons, because that's already been covered. So this is actually just moving around some parking meters and making a lot more convenient and a lot easier for our visitors to go ahead and visit our downtown area.
It does affect, Amanda, it does affect about eight spaces, of the leased spaces. I've worked closely with City Finance on this and Colleen. So we had a meeting just last week about everything. So it affects about eight spaces. It adds a few more meters to the lower level. But once again, I think it also generates a little more revenue base because we go from 25 cents to 50 cents on all the meters on the main level. And although that isn't a lot, it does add up over the course of a year and does make a difference. So yeah, we have connected very closely with everyone.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for Dan Seifner. Would you repeat that again? Who is paying the tab for this parking meters?
Destination Rapid City is picking up the entire tab with the meters, with the installation, programming the meters to the 50 cents an hour. There will be no cost to our taxpayers or anything to City.
I think that's very critical. Thank you, Dan. And I appreciate all the service and everything, especially everything else that Destination Rapid City does for our downtown businesses and downtown core. Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Richie. Any further discussion? The motion on item 19 is to acknowledge. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We are now on item number 23. And Chad, if you could read this into the record for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 23 is all bids for the Canyon Lake Reddale Sidewalk Installation Project, number SW 12-2042/CIP, number 50936, open on September 10, 2013. Be rejected and authorized as staff to re-advertise for bids. And I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Roberts. And we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask Mr. Waltersdorf questions, please? Terry, we talked a little bit, but when you look at us putting this back out for bids, conceivably, we wouldn't have a completion until next spring, would we? Or early summer?
No, that's correct. We would anticipate putting probably a May 30 completion date on it. I think the reason we only got one bid, and remember, this is the second time we've bid it this fall here, local concrete contractors are just really busy, and this is kind of a smaller project.
I think, thank you. Do you have any idea what kind of, in your mind, percentage-wise, how far out of the norm you think this bid might have been?
Our estimate was 75,000, and it came in at 110, so considerably higher.
I guess one of the things is the people are getting notified, and they get so much, you know, they get a demand letter that says, put in your sidewalks, or we're going to put them in for you. So now all the people that spent their money and put their sidewalks in, they're wondering, well, now how come the city's dragging their feet? And I just hope that the bids next spring are less than $110,000. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And we'll now go to Jerry Wright.
A similar question to set the other citizens at ease. What's the cost per square foot that this is coming in at, and how's that compared to like what we're paying over in Jackson-Bulleford? Are we going to see a lower price next spring, or has the market shifted that much where we won't? I'm just curious.
I think realistically, if we extend the completion date out, we're going to get some better prices, a little better competition. And I'd be very honest with you, if we'd had two bids and they were both similar in price, I'd feel a little more comfortable. But with only receiving one bid and being that much higher than our estimate, it just seemed prudent to us to extend it out and rebid it.
And we'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I think it's kind of frustrating for our citizens when we demand they pay, do what we ask of them, and then the city drags its feet. However, since we represent all the taxpayers, you know, we also need to get the best deal for our taxpayers as we can as far as those homeowners, not only on Reddale, but also on Canyon Lake. So I know it's frustrating for our citizens, but in the long run, it'll be best for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And we'll go to Terry Waltersdorf.
So I'll make sure we're clear on this. We did not drag our feet on this. This is the second time we've bid this out. So we've done our best effort to try to get bids. That's why we always hope that people will install it themselves. Number one, generally, they get a better price. Number two, obviously, sometimes it's difficult for us to do a smaller city project like this and get bids. So keep in mind, on Reddale, there's two property owners up there that did not get their sidewalks installed, so most of them are in place. We do have one handicap ramp up on the corner of West, I think, St. Patrick, if I remember right, in Reddale. We'll actually change order that into our current miscellaneous improvement project, and we'll get that installed yet this fall.
And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Terry, would you repeat that comment about the first bids or first try at a bid? We did not get any bids in.
That's correct. This is the second time we've bid this project. I just think the local concrete contractors are extremely busy trying to wrap up their work before the snow flies.
And then the second point is the dollar amount that's coming in as that second go-around coming in that bid, doesn't that appear to be a little bit punitive if we accepted that bid? Meaning that this is way over our estimate, engineering estimate, and it would start to get in into the area of being punitive for the property owners?
Well, there's probably two ways to look at that. And in one hand, it's their fault for not putting it in themselves. But on the other hand, I guess to wait until next May, in my mind, is probably not the end of the world considering the fact that we haven't had sidewalks up there for 40, 50 years, however long the development's been there. So it seems reasonable to me to just rebid this and extend the construction schedule out.
Thank you, Terry. I agree. Let's do that. Thank you.
And we'll go back to Jerry Wright.
Just to clarify the record, this is an assessed project that would be assessed back to the owners, and it's not really out of our pocket. So the due diligence on price is fair. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item 23? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on the non-consent items, items 24 through 31. Public comment is now open for items 24 through 31. I do not have any public comment, items for 24 through 31. Have I missed anyone? Oh, very good. And we'll recognize Colleen Schmidt on item 30. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Sounds like I'm on, so I apologize for almost missing the item. I'm Colleen Schmidt, the new committee chairman of Compass. And I won't insult you by reading you the quarterly report that's already linked to your agenda, but I just wanted to highlight some of the second quarter audit items. The city charge account program was completed. Four recommendations were made there, and the final audit report was approved by the City Council for dissemination on 8/19. A city fee audit is in the fieldwork phase. The airport contact audit is in the planning phase, and a follow-up to the cash handling audit is underway. So far this year, the Compass program has spent $123,681, which is 62% of the budget, pretty much on target. $75,000 remains of the total budget, and the 2014 budget of $197,800 has been approved by the council. The goal of Compass is to identify efficiencies, cost savings, cost avoidance, revenue enhancements, or other benefits to the city government and the taxpayers. This is a new program, just established, staff hired in 2012. However, two audits have been completed, and it will take some time, communication, and cooperation overall. We've done the cash handling audit, as I mentioned, and the city charge account program. We are looking for citizen members for the committee. We have two vacancies, so I would encourage any listeners out there to apply for this committee. It's interesting. It's working, and it will take, I think it'll take a number of years. When I was first interviewed for the committee, I thought it would take, based on Sioux Falls, about five years to recognize real cost benefits to the citizens of the city. And I think it still will. Thank you. Any questions?
We'll come to you in a little bit.
Okay, all right.
We'll finish the public comment.
I appreciate it.
Any further public comment items for 24 through 31? Seeing none, public comment is now closed for those items. And we'll go directly to item number 24. And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 24 is a second reading of ordinance 5958 and ordinance amending the regulation of fugitive emissions and abatement of smoke by amending chapter 8.34 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle for approval. And we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. When this ordinance first came out, I had some concerns on it because I was trying to figure out what the modifications and stuff were. And Brett Limbaugh and the young lady who is soon to leave us helped me understand a lot of the modifications that were made to this. My primary concerns, just so the public knows, was I was concerned with city employees trying to get into a resident to monitor what they were burning in their fireplace or their wood stoves. And it was made clear to me that at no time would a city employee enter the house. That was not required according to this ordinance to monitor emissions. And another concern I had was the appeal process. Since there is going to be a little bit more of a bite to anyone who is burning things that should not be burned in their fireplace or wood stoves, it's, the, the legal ramifications are a little bit stronger, and so there is an appeal process in place. And if a citizen receives a letter, they can appeal to the air quality board. My concern was that the air quality board currently only meets quarterly. So it was also explained to me that they only meet quarterly because that is generally the only amount of time that they need. There's not a whole lot that happens, and that they could easily change their schedule to meet any appeal that was brought before them. So I have had my questions clarified, and I will be voting in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion on item twenty-four? The motion on the floor is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twenty-five is request the budget reconciliation report for the entire budget, city budget, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a request I brought forward, and Pauline Sumption and I have been working on this reconciliation. Basically, what I'm looking for is whenever the council approves a supplemental appropriation that changes the proposed budget and increases it, I, I'm just looking for a way that the council will have a better way to see what the actual effect has done on that. And Pauline is working on this. It's going to take a little bit more time. I wanted this go ahead and brought to council because I'll bring it back, and when Pauline and I have worked out what it'll look like. So, thank you.
We have a motion to acknowledge and a second by Laurenti. And just for the record, our finance officer is unavailable tonight. She is currently out of town evaluating the replacement for the IFIS software. So representing her finance office tonight is Heidi Weaver. So thank you, Heidi. And she's also taking the minutes. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is request for revenue report for the entire budget with actuals through six thirty to thirteen. I move to acknowledge.
Motion by Lewis and a second by Peterson to acknowledge item number twenty-six. And we'll go to Amanda Scott.
And just for clarification on this one, this report is available, and just so the public knows, this report is now being attached and sent out monthly. So we are already getting this report. This item is totally done, and I think it gives us a lot better information as far as budget revenues and expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-seven, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty-seven is authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign permanent drainage easement and agreement between DTH LLC and the city of Rapid City for the Rapid City Sports Complex, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson to approve. And we'll go to Brad Estes. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, excuse me. I will be abstaining from item twenty-seven and twenty-eight as I'm related to the grantor of the easement. Thanks.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Brad Estes. Item twenty-eight, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty-eight is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign permanent utility easement and agreement between DTH LLC and the city of Rapid City for the Rapid City Sports Complex, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Peterson for approval of item twenty-eight, and there will be one abstention. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one abstention from Brad Estes. Item twenty-nine, Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty-nine is the update on Racine Street storm water drainage issues, and I'll yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
Excuse me. Terry, with our current hearings on stormwater, it might be appropriate just to discuss briefly what happened here, and where we're going with our intended efforts in improving the drainage of stormwater in the city of Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think Deltech gave you guys kind of a brief overview, and we do have a site map attached to the agenda item. Keep in mind, this goes back to nineteen seventy-three, when these, these lots were originally platted. We believe that the drainage channel along that drainage easement was probably built in nineteen seventy-eight, probably has seen little to no maintenance since that time. I do believe our attorney, Joel Ann Dean, provided you guys an opinion as regarding the, the maintenance of that particular structure. And at this point, I think we just need direction on, on how you guys want to proceed on this.
Thank you, Terry. I'm, I'm using this for a point of commercial, so we can promote our last hearing, which is tomorrow night at South Middle School at six P.M. to discuss the stormwater drainage utility that's being proposed by our public works department and our task force. It's an opportunity for citizen input and discussion with our staff and elected officials as to how we can manage and better manage our city's stormwater issues from neglect and failure to maintain and construct facilities that we've needed since probably the nineteen fifty. So I encourage anyone that's of interest in here or listening to attend. Thank you.
And we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, question, if you don't mind. I'd like to make a motion to number two that you sent out, but I wanted to know what the wording would be, how you would like to have that worded. And another question being, as far as us getting that easement, do you think, I read your memo, but will there be any problem as far as the city taking over that easement, so we can actually get in there and do the drainage improvements?
No, I don't think it should be a problem getting in and, and doing the improvements. I think, I guess I'm not sure what the motion would be. If you want to proceed on number two, even without a motion, I think staff, staff could head down that road and then come back and get approvals of what needs to be approved.
Well, could I just make a motion to have you move forward in getting the easements for the city?
Yes, I, I think that would be appropriate. And then we can give that some more thought and bring it back to the legal and finance committee, I think, as far as moving forward. But I think if, if you can even vote on what my option number two was, that would give us enough direction to start moving forward on it, and then bring some, some things back for your approval.
Should we read that option into the record? I'm not too comfortable of saying...
I, I think at this point, option two, what it does is says that we're not sure on the past who was responsible, but from this point forward, we'll agree to essentially take responsibility for it and maintain it into the future. And also look to talk to the property owners, and in exchange for us agreeing to take over the maintenance of it in the future, ask for releases on any damage claims that they may have at this time. I, I don't know that we have, as the, the memo indicated, don't know that we would have any liability, but at this point, that would just clear it up, and then we could move forward. And, and at least for the homeowners, they would have some satisfaction that in the future, the drainage would be taken care of, and that they wouldn't have this problem again.
Thank you, Joel.
And if they did, we would clearly be responsible at that point.
Yes, we would be responsible in the future. Do you got that motion, Mr. Mayor?
I think so.
What's that? Thank you.
You didn't, you didn't offer a motion at the beginning of your comments, did you?
That's right. Well, somebody else can make the motion, then.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Joel, if I understand this right, all this would be subject to the, the exists, the property owners whose easement, that, that, the easement that crosses their back of their property, that easement's going to have to be redirected or readdressed to be, to the benefit of the city, while, while it not, and I mean, they'd be crazy not, I mean, they'd be crazy not to sign that over.
Correct. There's already an easement over the property. The question is, who's the beneficiary of it? We would probably ask them to sign something that made clear where the beneficiary of the easement, so we could go in there and do work. And as you pointed out, they already have an easement. It would be the exact same size, I believe, so they would be rather foolish not to agree to that, because then they clearly wouldn't have any responsibility for it.
Thank you.
We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make John's motion.
We have a motion by Scott and a second by Peterson to proceed with option number two, and to bring back recommendations as needed to public works or legal and finance. Amanda, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And then may I also ask Terry Waltersdorf a question, please?
Sure.
Terry, I understand by the council giving approval for option two and trying to clean up the responsibility of the easements going forward will be the city's responsibility. The issue is also getting the drainage taken care of up there. So proceeding forward, I guess I'm asking a funding source, or do, do you anticipate the, the drainage issues itself not being taken care of till two thousand and fourteen, or do you think some cleaning up of this issue can, can happen still this year?
Realistically, by the time we get done acquiring the appropriate paperwork and easements and some of the viability waivers, probably looking at two thousand and fourteen anyway, and it's, it would be best fit to fall under that, those monies that you allocated in two thousand and fourteen for the stormwater utility.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Richie Nordstrom.
Mayor, if we get any preference on this, I hope that we could get this sent back to Public Works, so that we can review what Joel is recommending here. And that way, we can kind of, I would suggest that from his comments, from the attorney's comments, that we could have them a little bit better articulated out in the public, so that the public can see what he's suggesting. So in addition, we've, we've started this project in the Public Works Committee meeting, and, and if there's any preference, I'd like to keep it there for the, for the meantime.
Any objection to that from the motion maker?
I have no issue.
Okay. So the motion has been clarified, and it's okay with the seconder to take it back to Public Works. I mean, the motion is to proceed with option number two, and then to take the recommendation for further action to, to Public Works. We are voting to proceed with option number two tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. That's what I wanted to clarify, is that the, the city attorney had said that if he was going to bring anything back, it would come back to legal and finance. All we are amending to this or clarifying is that it will come back to Public Works instead of legal and finance. That, that's the only change.
Very good. We are not continuing this item, so everyone knows. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty. Chad, would you read this in the record for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Item number thirty is the Compass Quarterly Report for the quarter ending June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. I move to acknowledge.
We have a motion to acknowledge by Lewis and a second by Peterson. We'll go to Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Colleen, for your comments and your leadership. Just to let the council know as a whole, and the community know, that the council leadership has met with our new delegates to the Compass Committee. We've discussed protocol for within their organization on how to communicate to us and to the mayor. And we have some homework to do on how they address city departments and through the director of departments and through the mayor, and we'll take care of that through meetings, and we will continue to improve the program. And I firmly believe, as Colleen said, that we will see benefits out of this in the near future and the distant future that will be worth our time. I know that there's been some anguish and some hard, hard feelings, hurt feelings and misunderstandings at times, but I think we're going in a positive way. And I ask the support of the council and staff to be patient with us, and we'll get much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any further discussion on this item? Motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number thirty-one. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number thirty-one is to approve the award of the total base bid for plus alternate, alternate number three for Rapid City Sports Complex Phase One, opened on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen, the lowest responsible bidder mainline contracting the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, and I move to approve.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Doyle to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We are now on public hearing items thirty-two through thirty-eight. Public hearing is now open for these items. I do not have any speaker request forms for items thirty-two through thirty-eight. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. We are on the consent. Public hearing items thirty-two through thirty-seven. These are all alcohol licenses. Do we have a motion on all of these?
So moved.
Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti, to approve items thirty-two through thirty-seven. Look to our police department or finance if we need to consider any of these separately. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirty-eight. Chad?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Number, item number thirty-eight is a second reading of ordinance fifty-nine fifty-six, and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of the chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential district, with a property generally described as being located at thirty-seven seventy-five Dias Avenue, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom to approve item number thirty-eight. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty-nine, bill list. I understand that there are no changes or additions. We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we need a recess, or should we just proceed directly into the civic center? Do you guys need time to set up?
Don't believe so, Mayor. I think we can just push here.
We'll skip the recess unless there's any fierce objection. Twenty after, twenty after seven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Mr. Mayor, who's also a gentleman, I didn't, didn't missay that. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm John Herr. I'm currently the president or chairman of the Rapid City Civic Center. The other members who are in attendance are Jeff Bailey, Chris Hago, and Jennifer Langith. Al Cornell, who is also on our board, is in Washington, D.C. on government business. What we'd like to do tonight is kind of present an update on what we've been doing for the past thirteen months. When we appeared before you then, you asked us to gather some information, and we feel we've done that. We've made a complete and in-depth review of, analysis of the existing Barnett Arena. And we looked at the cost of bringing it up to ADA standards, current standards. We looked into another study, which was on bringing it up to current code compliance, and the construction changes that need to be made, just to keep it alive for a while. And now we also looked at an economic impact of the three choices of doing nothing, revamping the present arena, and, or building a new one. What we hope to do tonight is convince you to lead us into the, a new future of the civic center and of the city itself. Chris Hago is going to address a couple of these items.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be here before the council to highlight the findings of the two primary studies that the Board of Directors commissioned with local engineering and architectural firms over the past year. Following the presentation of our vision to the future of the council last July, the Board to the future of the council last July, the board determined that we would be, that it would be advantageous to slow down a bit and gather additional information relative to the currents, to the current status of the Barnett Arena. In particular, we recognize the need to learn the exact areas of compliance that needed to be addressed. After all, if we as a community should consider the repair or replace of the arena, we need to be, we need to first establish the baseline for where we are at. Let's keep in mind that the structure is more than thirty-five years old, and that she predates the Americans with Disability Act and current international building standards. In order, in ordering these studies, the board sought to determine more precisely what the code and enforcement issues are, what specifically needs to be addressed, so that we are in compliance with federal, state, and local code, and at what cost. You all know of these two studies. We presented to Legal and Finance on our intent to hire forefront design to assist the ADA compliance review last fall. Our community, no doubt, received the results of both for, the forefront study and the TSP study on build, on building code and infrastructure appraisals subsequently disseminated by the way of our Civic Center website and also the local press. Both of these informative analyses afforded the board and our community a better appreciation for what we have. Here's the tally of the findings. Forefront design. A total of four hundred and two infractions with the current ADA law were identified. Violations within the Barnett Arena included seating, ramping, elevators, access, restrooms, concessions, and other accessibility and reasonable accommodation areas. The appraisal cost to mitigate the compliance issues for ADA was estimated at thirty-six to thirty-eight million. These estimates were at the request of the board, validated by a separate international design firm. Interestingly enough, to fully address the ADA issues, the current arena would lose seating capacity, and the scheduled improvement would most likely interfere with the major events that are currently held there. The TSP study, the second study commissioned by the Board of Directors, was with the Rapid City branch of TSP. TSP was tasked with analyzing building code compliance, infrastructure deficiencies, and the safety conditions of the Barnett Arena. Again, TSP worked directly with the Civic Center management for staff, and staff for weeks to complete an exhaustive review of the current status. Their findings, again widely disseminated to our community through the local press, included a vast list of required building and fire code infractions, major electrical deficiencies, lighting, IT, and communication deficits, and a reminder of the previously identified matter of the snow load deficiency. The appraisal cost to mitigate the compliance and the deficiency issues were estimated at thirty to thirty-five million. Next, I'd like to introduce our board member, Jeff Bailey, to update you on the, uh, progress made by the Civic Center Futures Committee.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, council members, staff. As Chris alluded to, I'm here to just run through a general timeline of activities, and then culminating in an update of our Civic Center's Future Committee, uh, the last, uh, twelve months of their activities, and also their recommendation. As you can see by the timeline, uh, the process that, that we've been, uh, going through, dated back to December of two thousand eleven, uh, when a, uh, committee, uh, kind of a information gathering committee, I guess would be the best way, brainstorming committee was appointed. Brainstorming committee were, uh, users of the, the, uh, facility, including, uh, prior council members, uh, staff from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, community members at large. The intent was to get together upon the, what would soon be the fortieth anniversary of, uh, of the initial design of the Civic Center, the facility, to kind of get some ideas on what we would be looking at, you know, twenty, forty years from now. Uh, subsequent to that, then, in preparation, because, uh, the, the outcome of that was a nice little PowerPoint presentation, knowing that we were gonna be coming, uh, before, uh, the council to, to give an update on the status of the Barnett Arena, uh, some commissions, some studies were commissioned. Two of them in particular that we presented to you last July, fourteen months ago, studies completed, of course, by AECOM. Uh, Mr. David Stone came to Rapid City to deliver that information. It was an economic, uh, analysis, economic impact analysis, of what the, uh, the Civic Center, that particularly the Rushmore, or the Barnett Arena brings to our community. And, uh, an, an additional study, uh, by Arc International, Donovan Broberg, local architectural firm. Donovan had created some renderings, some, some visual renderings, visionary renderings, if you will, but nothing concrete, just something to throw out there for consideration. Presented this information back in July of two thousand twelve. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, that presentation, and thank you for your support, overwhelming support at the time, it kind of came back, and we were, uh, very delighted by the, the reaction, at least initially. But, uh, something happened at that point where we recognized as a board the need to slow down a little bit, very much to, uh, credited to the guidance of, of this body. Slow down. Take your time. Think things through. Get some more things answered. Have a better idea. I mean, your, your vision and these fancy drawings are wonderful, but please, slow down, involve the community, demonstrate some further due diligence. Well, so that's what we've been doing for fourteen months. August two thousand twelve, notification by the Department of Justice, Office of Civil Rights, notification of Mayor Quaker, that the, uh, that the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center was in violation of Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety-two. We're still working diligently to track down the particulars of that complaint. In, uh, November of two thousand twelve, the, uh, the body, the Civic Center Futures Committee was formed. This was in November of two thousand twelve. I've got thirteen, that's my error there on the slide. Eighteen members. Initially started off with a group of fifteen members. Community members at large, from diverse backgrounds to represent our community as a whole. Um, incredibly, fourteen of the fifteen accepted our invitation to thoroughly review and thoughtfully consider the current status of the Don Barnett Arena and its related infrastructure. That's amazing in this day and age, because we are asking them to make a nine-month commitment, to follow along with the studies, to tell us what additional information they might need, uh, to come together. Uh, this, this body of, of names that you see there represents a cross-section of our community stakeholders. We have users of the facility, uh, representatives from tourism and hospitality industry, regional business interests, persons with disabilities, active community members, and retired community members, our seniors, and also our youth. The committee began meeting in December of two thousand twelve, hosting open meetings twice monthly, in addition to the smaller subcommittee activities that they were involved with. They first started off by conducting a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the Barnett Arena. Uh, the committee also requested and received written and oral reports on a variety of aspects relative to the arena's construction, its management, its maintenance, its operations, its conditions, and its usage. The committee also gathered information about the future, including community and regional needs and trends, and what we need to do to be prepared, not ten years from now, but thirty and forty and even fifty years from now. The Futures Committee was, completed their tasks in July of two thousand thirteen, and they provided a formal recommendation to the Civic Center Board. As they tied up their work, uh, the, the chair of the committee, uh, Mr. Dan Warren, I believe, yep, Dan's right in the back there tonight, related to me, that it was his impression that to the last member of the community, uh, of the committee, uh, the CCFC would be prepared to reconvene for continued service, should they be asked to do so. One of the many exciting outcomes that arose from the committee's work came at the recommendation of Mr. Lloyd Lacroix. Lloyd, Lloyd said that we needed to reach out to the area high schools and, and see if there weren't some youth that would like to convene and also assist with our task. And so we did just that. We invited, uh, a variety from the three, actually, more of the high schools were invited, but, uh, we received, uh, interest from students of, of the three high schools, three of the high schools here in Rapid City, St. Thomas More, Stevens, and Central. Uh, this youth group rose to the occasion. They received a very thorough behind-the-scenes tour of the arena. They surveyed many of the areas of concern, uh, identified in the various reports that had been commissioned. And they too completed a SWOT analysis, and then also, as importantly, conducted a survey at their local high schools of, of their, their, their colleagues, uh, their, their youth colleagues, if you will, other students at the high school. And ultimately, they, they, uh, offered their recommendations in the form of presentation. What a outstanding civics lesson that must have been for them. Council members, I, I see members of the CCFC and the youth subcommittee that are in attendance tonight. Some of them saw we were fortieth on the agenda, and maybe, uh, because it's a school night, maybe didn't pop in, but that's fine. And, and on the behalf of the board, I would again like to acknowledge and, and recognize, uh, this, these bodies for their time and effort, and, uh, and their dedication to the city of Rapid City, and seeing through their assigned tasks, uh, and doing it, uh, all the way through to fruition. So, you might have read the CCFC recommendation, again, released not only through our, our website, it's become, uh, really a repository of archival information pertaining all the way back to, uh, the original brainstorming team documents that came forward, and everything in between. But based on their expense, extensive nine-month review, the Civic Center Futures Committee offered the following recommendation. And, and this is what brings us back before you here this evening. Again, uh, as you look at our, our, uh, site, at www.gotmine.com, right there in the corner, stay updated for the future of the Civic Center. I would invite, uh, those that haven't had the opportunity to go in and follow that link, again, repository of huge amounts, volumes of documentation related to, uh, to our activities. Okay, oops, I'm gonna stop there. Um, so, it's my pleasure now to introduce the, the newest member of our board, Ms. Jennifer Langith.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here this evening. I am Jennifer Langith, and I'm the newest member, and so, um, it's been kind of a whirlwind getting caught up with everything. But I have to say that the board, um, has done so much research in, as well as the CCFC. And I would like to have those folks that are in the audience stand up that were served on that committee, just so that you can see who's here. So if everybody was, that was on that, would stand up. Thank you. As a, as a lifetime resident of Rapid City, I am so pleased to be on this board, and, um, to be here tonight. And I have to say that I'm so excited about the overwhelming response that we have gotten from the community for a new arena. I apologize for my voice here tonight. You know, like I said, I'm a lifetime resident, and I think back in the early seventies, um, when I was quite a bit younger. And I remember when the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center was built, and, you know, it, there was just such great pride and excitement in Rapid City that this new facility was going in. Um, our family would take Sunday drives down and look at the progress of the Civic Center, and no one could believe that Elvis Presley was actually gonna be our debut show. And, you know, my parents insisted at that time, though it wasn't a big deal for me, that I, that I'd be there. It was important, you know? You show your support for your community. And I'm glad I did, you know? I kind of fussed about it a little bit, but I remember it vividly, and it was just so neat to be at, at the Civic Center. The Civic Center became the center of our community for a long time. It's a place where the Raider Cobbler football ga, or basketball games took place. We had state basketball, professional basketball, and, and way back in the day, huge rock concerts. My son was amazed at all the groups that I would, I was able to see. You know, it is, it was, and is, a great place for our community to come together. You know, it's, it's kind of the wintertime, um, downtown plaza, I guess, where people can, can walk through the sports show, that you can walk through the home show, the, the parade of homes, um, powwows, and, and visit with your, with your neighbors and other people in the community that you don't see very often. Like many in my generation, we grew up thinking that Rapid City was actually a very forward-thinking community, because we had the Civic Center, and it really, at that time, was a state-of-the-art complex. We were the leaders in the region, and we were light-years ahead of Sioux Falls and other bigger communities, um, in surrounding states. Now, I don't have to tell you that, um, as with anything, age has a way of pulling everything down. As people age, they spend more time at the doctors. As buildings age, they require more maintenance and upkeep, and there comes a point where it becomes very, very, very costly to keep old systems functioning inefficiently. So much so that we are forced to either decide that the building should be torn down, left to sit vacant and deteriorate, or to start anew. We are at that point with the Barnett Arena. Being in the construction industry and dealing with new builds and renovations, I always tell people that it's much easier to start fresh and anew than to go through, than to go through, uh, a renovation. You, it will generally be more costly to renovate. People are put out of their space. They're uncomfortable. They're, they're misplaced. Things change, and, um, you, you always are working around something that's existing and isn't exactly what you want it to be. It's sad, but because of the aging arena, we are no longer the leaders in this region. It doesn't make economic sense for big entertainers to stop in Rapid City, and the facility gets used less and less while operating and maintenance costs increase. We are being left behind. We know that there is a monumental project before us, but for those of us in the Black Hills, we're not afraid of monumental, um, to tackle men, monumental projects. We know that the forthcoming decisions will be discussed, challenged, and debated, and rightly so. But please, consider some of the things that our board has pondered as we ask for your assistance to move ahead. We could expend the seventy million dollars to make the Barnett Arena compliant, but it still won't be modern and competitive. And it won't be the kind of entertainment facility that people are looking for. The larger revenue generating sports and entertainment acts don't really want to stop here. They can't get the people, they can't get the seats, and it's, it's about the money for those acts. Many of the mechanical systems are thirty-five years old, in need of repair and replacement to maximize efficiencies. And the roof structure, which I didn't quite understand all this, um, you know, why that was such a big deal, but the, the acts that are out there, they have such heavy equipment. They, they are, you know, having all kinds of, of acts hanging from the ceiling, doing whatever, and, and our roof just can't support those types of things. So we're missing out on those kind of events that we can bring to Rapid City, to our citizens, and to generate revenue. Just like the hard decision that was made back in nineteen seventy-two, Rapid City will need to decide whether it will be at the top of the game, or continue to fall further and further behind in the competition. While the board fully recognizes and embraces that the future of our new arena may, may be referred to a public vote, we are wholeheartedly unified in the belief that the citizens of Rapid City must understand and be actively engaged in the decisions related to the scope and usage of the future proposed project. So the Board of Directors of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center respectfully requests that the Rapid City Common Council identify an appropriate source of available funds to complete a preliminary design and cost estimate for the construction of a new arena at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. Thank you, and we will stand for any questions that you may have.
Jennifer, before we proceed to additional public comment, could you identify the cost range that you were, you were seeking?
For the, for the study?
Yes.
We are estimating that it, it may be up to that, uh, five hundred thousand dollar price range.
Up to, up to five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Very good. And we now have a speaker request forum. We'll go to Dave Davis on this item.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. Dave Davis, twenty-six, twenty-two Harvard. I'm not before you tonight to try to convince you to go one way or the other on this issue. I think the standalone on what the information that's been presented to you. But I do want to reiterate some of the things that Dr. Bailey said, and specifically, the approach that was taken to this Future Planning Committee. And the very unique piece of it, it was a, a very open and forward-thinking committee all the way along, but a very unique approach when former Councilman Lacroix brought the idea of including the youth. Phenomenal experience, and I mean for the adults in the group, not the kids. It was pretty good for them as well. They took this project by the horns, and they ran with it. In fact, we ran the agenda parallel to the one that had been handled the week before by the adults. had been handled the week before by the adults. Boy, we got through it a lot faster because they went after the work and they got her done. The politics were set to the side, things were handled. In fact, they came up with the idea themselves to put together a survey. You see, they weren't willing to just sit back and say, there's six of us or 20 on this committee. They went out and addressed each of those three high schools, St. Thomas More Central and Stevens, and asked their peers. And I believe there were somewhere close to 400 students in this city that were part of the study. The students that ultimately will be the adults and the parents and the users of that facility and the ones who will future, in the future, will pay for that facility. They addressed the same things, and by the way, they came up with the same conclusion. Little different in some areas, little different things that they felt were more important, but at the end, even though they were instructed not to look at it from a dollar and cent standpoint, as was the committee, by the way, our direction was, is it the right thing to do? Unfortunately, it's back in your hands whether it's an affordable thing to do. The kids really went after this thing and they addressed what it was going to, what the end result was gonna be. And ultimately, one of the first things they came to grips with was the economic impact. It wasn't just a matter of what this facility may or may not cost, but a look back on what this facility has generated over the last nearly 40 years and what we'll lose to this city if they don't move forward in the same fashion in the future. Really, what I'm here for tonight is just to ask all of you to publicly acknowledge this group of young people, these future adults, the future citizens, the future leaders in this community, for the efforts and the accomplishments that they've put forward as part of this committee. And I would hope that if not tonight, somewhere in the future, one of you brings them on as a group, as the Citizens of the Month or whatever, because they truly deserve it. They are an example of just what the future of Rapid is. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Any further speaker request forums on item 40? Did I miss anyone? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. And we'll go to Chad Lewis for reading the item into the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 40 is to request to identify available funding options for a cost analysis for a new arena, and I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded, and we'll go to Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to fund the preliminary design and cost estimate for replacement of the Don Barnett Arena through the Vision Fund via loan from Undesignated Cash. If I can get a second, I will explain. Thank you. I did speak with, for those of you that didn't know this, speak with our finance director last week about the various options coming through, and took a step back and kind of looked at the bigger picture of this 14-month journey that I've been blessed to be a part of. And the original request to flesh out the numbers for giving us a more concise look at what this new arena could cost us came through Vision as a recommendation to council, and it was approved. So, I think to stay consistent to what we have set out to do, I think it was July of 2012 we started this, and not delay it any longer that we take the bull by the horns, like I heard somebody say, and get it moving this evening. Yeah, just to get it back on track. Fantastic presentation, by the way. I yield. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Just so we're all on the same page, the motion is to take the legal and finance recommendation for funding. I mean, what's on the agenda tonight says request to identify available funding options for a cost analysis for a new arena.
Would you like me to clarify?
I would.
Okay. No, we felt that because it's already gone through Vision as this, as the request, and it's gone through legal and finance, and it's gone through council, that to go back and do that would be very redundant. So, after speaking with Pauline, the monies through Undesignated Cash would get loaned to Vision to cover it. It does look as if we may not even need that because there may be some reversion that would cover it in the Vision Fund currently, but I'm not gonna go into details on that right now. But that's the best way to get it done, to get it moving so that there is no longer a delay. So, it was not to send it back. It was to proceed because that would keep in the spirit with the original motions and passings that we've had.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I can really get behind this motion because I believe that's a good source that we can use. Yes, we can look at other funding sources such as CIP or SAB 28, or even perhaps dipping into the general fund, but I think taking another look at the unencumbered cash would be, a loan is essentially what we're looking at. And my seeing of the numbers and everything that are coming from the unencumbered cash, it can handle it quite well. But I want to applaud, if I may, Mr. Davis, that bringing forward to our information that the students or the younger audience is very interested in this. So, thank you for bringing that forward to our attention. They are the future of this arena, much less the whole entire Civic Center aspect of it. It's great to hear their enthusiasm and being totally engaged in the process and how they came up with their solutions for it and recommendations. So, again, thank you. The other part of it is that in my conversations with the public, they are very on board with the idea of doing something with ADA and also very much on board with doing something with the parking lot. Yes, they don't have the total answers for everything, and with this new look and a new approach at it, I believe it will be an easier sell. It's not gonna be easy to sell this whole project to the public, and I admire you folks for continuing on with the process of educating the public on this. Please keep at it because it's gonna take a lot of hard work to do this. So, I applaud you folks for doing that. And then, I'm also very interested in how AECOM will fit in this whole organization and how they do their magic with arenas. So, again, thank you very much for all the hard work you've put together, presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richie. Before we proceed to the additional council lights, I have a question for our city attorney, just to clarify regarding the motion on the floor. What's printed on the agenda tonight is to request, a request to identify available funding options for a cost analysis for a new arena. The motion is to fund the cost analysis from Undesignated Cash as a loan to be repaid later from Vision Funds. So, my question to you is, is the motion that's on the floor in order? Just want to clarify.
Well, I understand your concern that it doesn't say on the agenda approve up to $500,000 in funding to fund the arena. And so, there could be a question about whether or not there was sufficient notice to the public in order to address it. Having not looked at that prior to tonight's meeting, that puts me in a pretty difficult spot. I will say that I've seen some cases where I don't think it takes a lot of notice, but it certainly would be better if it was very clear on the agenda that you were going to vote tonight to expend funds and how much in funds potentially you were gonna vote to expend. I think if you move forward, that it's defensible, but at the same time, just to make things extremely clear, it might not be a bad idea to put it on the next legal and finance agenda with the recommendation so that it's very clear to the public that the action that is up for discussion and a vote is for expending money. And not only for expending money, because I think that you could potentially take that away, but how much money you're planning on expending for the study.
And we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for all the work. This is pretty darn amazing. And I think this step is obviously crucial for our community to be able to make the next right decision. I just really want to urge the people that are out there watching, if they're watching this new show, Desperate Councilmen or whatever, but to go on this, to go on this website and get on this, click the tab, because as being the new person that went out, went door to door, knocked on doors, when the newspaper says ADA's $40 million, well, that's hard for people to believe. I mean, and I had trouble as to whether or not there's transparency in those numbers. And if you get on the website, you can find all that information. It'd be nice to find a way to be able to get that out into the community to be a little better. But anyway, I urge people to become more informed rather than just write the anecdotes to two cents, to actually maybe spend their time on the internet, looking at all the work that this group did, all the reports that were put together. It tells you where the $35, $40 million comes from for ADA. It tells you where all the $35 million comes from for the code. And to me, the decision becomes clearer. So, again, I want to thank you all very, very much for the hard work.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask a question on Brian Maliski? Right. Thank you very much. During the budget hearings, you were saying that the Civic Center has in contingency your reserves north of $700,000, correct?
Yes.
Just a question of, why don't you fund it out of your reserves, and then when we go into the bonding at some point, we can pay you back?
My understanding from that, first off, the reserves we have, we use to either buy shows or be a co-promotion on those shows. We also expand approximately $330,000 per year on capital outlay. Between the shows that we go out and buy, the shows that we co-pro on, and the $330,000 worth of capital outlay that we do on a yearly basis, the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center needs a little bit more than $1 million per year in the reserves to do those items. The second thing, and my understanding from Pauline, was rather than Civic Center pay and then be reimbursed, there's a timeframe in there, and the time that I recall her saying is it had to happen within 30 days. So, if the Civic Center expended the $400, $500,000 out of our reserves, we'd need to be repaid, is my understanding, within 30 days, 30 to 45 days, which I don't believe could happen. But that would also put us in a position where we'd not be able to go out and secure some of the acts and some of the shows, the Broadway shows, those types of things. Or we'd have to revert back on some of the capital outlay that we do on a yearly basis.
So, really, that's not reserves. That's money that's accounted for, so?
It is. It's essentially, we use it partially as a trust fund. We use it partially in order to go out and purchase additional shows. But we also use it, as everyone's aware, we've had extensive damage to our roofs within the Civic Center. And as we are waiting, we have assessors come in right now and assess the damage that we have on the roofs and those other areas. We're waiting to see how much money that we have to expend for that. Those come out of our own reserves. We don't have someone else we rely on. So, when we have something that is catastrophic or catastrophic in nature, we may have some of that insured, some of that is not insured. And we are trying to keep money in reserves to pay for those.
Thank you very much.
Everyone that's worked on this has done a great job, and I know you don't want to delay or setback. I know a year ago, when I was gone and I came back and I heard that we're moving ahead, I said, that was like getting married on the first date. I don't think this is the first date. I think there's been a lot of discussion by your subcommittees and by your employees and so forth on this issue. I just want to say that the council will make a decision here shortly, and I'll support it if they decide to fund it tonight or if they want to wait. I don't care. But I don't want them to wait any longer than two weeks. But I do ask that the board continue their due diligence and hard work because this is a huge commitment for this community. And I want to make sure that we do it right. I want to make sure we don't buy off more than we can chew. A little optimism is good. Confidence is good. And I've also asked in my discussions with members of the committee and staff that we put together a very well-done public education, public relations effort so that our citizens truly understand what's happening. And in addition to that, I want to see a very, very careful upfront discussion on really what is the market out there. I know you've done some. Let's be real careful, make darn sure that our zone of influence, our people we can contact, our market is there, and we can support it. And that's all I want to say. And we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you.
Chad Lewis.
I'd like to call the question.
We do have two additional lights. Is there any objections to calling the question? We have an objection. We'll proceed to a vote on whether or not to call the question. Do you have a second to call the question, Chad? Is there a second to call the question? We have a second by Brad Estes to call the question. I think we should allow for more debate, but we'll go to the motion on whether or not to call the question. A yes vote is to end debate, and a no vote is to keep debating. All in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Heidi.
Roberts, Clayton, Laurenti, Estes, Peterson, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Scott, Nordstrom. It's five to five.
Chair votes no. Debate continues. We'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer an amendment to the motion to send this back to the next legal and finance meeting. And if I could maintain the floor, if I can get a second.
We'll take that as a substitute rather than an amendment.
Substitute motion.
That's okay with you?
Thank you.
So, to repeat the motion, it's a substitute motion to direct staff to proceed with identifying the available funding options and bring that to legal and finance, or the next available legal and finance meeting.
That is correct.
What's the date, Heidi, of the next legal and finance? Do you happen to know?
That would be...
October 2, Wednesday, October 2. And you have a second to your motion, Steve?
A second.
We have a second by Clayton. And Steve, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to speak about this because I do support the idea. You know, when we had the initial presentation, we were all, I don't want to use the word gaga because I think that got us in trouble, but it had a lady before it. But the fact of the matter is, the Civic Center is getting older and has been presented to us is a $66 to $83 million price tag just to get the operations, I mean, the physical plant, you will, of the building and the ADA compliance up to date. So, we're talking about a lot of money. And I think it's important for the public, not just the council, but the public, to know that and to weigh that cost. Because when we go buy something, as I said when we had the initial presentation, I want to know the cost. And I think most of us want to know what the real cost is gonna be. It's obviously gonna be more than going to TJ Maxx and paying for the gas to go look at a price tag on a piece of clothing that we might want there. We all know that. But the fact of the matter is, we want to know that price tag. It's a great idea, and we need to know the specifics. And one of those specifics, obviously, one of the largest specifics that we all need to know, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer, is the cost. And so, I wholeheartedly support funding this to find out, to get this cost analysis done so that we can present it to the public, get it out in the open, and move from there. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. We are now on a new motion, so we'll go to people who have spoken on the previous one. We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I will say is that the name or the agenda title was changed. That wasn't me. So, it could have been a little bit more straightforward prior to, you know, 14 months ago, the public asked us to flesh out these numbers. That's what we were asked to do, 14 months ago. And we went through the proper channels, and that proper channel was Vision, recommendation to council. We moved forward on that. As a condition of moving forward to flesh out those numbers, we asked the Civic Center Board for a lot more information, and they did acquiesce our request, thankfully. So, I think the delay is really, an additional delay is unnecessary. When we look at the funding options that have been discussed, they all involve juggling funds to get this covered. One of them would be through CIP. CIP making a loan to Vision to cover the cost of this. I'm not real pleased with that personally. I think some of us up here really would rather not see that since we obviously have a lot of infrastructure needs out there and want every... a lot of infrastructure needs out there, and want every dollar working for us that we can possibly get working for us. Another option would be SAB twenty-eight. That's for assessed projects. To me, that doesn't really fit the bill. It, that would be a, even in the loosest definition of what that fund is for, I don't believe that it would be exactly appropriate. So we have extra money in unencumbered cash, loan it to Vision. Something I learned today is that we should have approximately seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars coming back from a Vision project that would more than cover the cost of this study. And that was for the energy, energy plan improvements. So there are things in the work. We may not even have to take that money out of unencumbered cash. It's there. It's been delayed fourteen months. I, you know, I just, I think the public asked us to flush out the numbers because the numbers they want to see is how much is this arena going to cost? Is it something that the citizens want to invest in? Is it something that the people of Rapid City and the taxpayers can afford to do? And that's, any, any longer delay, that cost is going up. Estimates I've heard from people in the construction business, it's about a quarter of a million dollars. Every month, we twiddle our thumbs. And I'm not comfortable when I know that it's going up and escalating every week. We're thinking about it. You know, that, that's an extra potential burden on the taxpayer that I'd like to avoid. So I think we've, I need a new saying, I don't like beat the horse. But I, I, I think we have looked under every rock. We've explored every avenue. And, you know, I, again, have talked this over with the finance officer. She's, she's comfortable with this. And then with the news today, I think it's, I think it's a prudent course of action. They asked us to flush out the numbers, let's get it done. And then someone mentioned as part of the process, public input. Any firm that would be hired to do this preliminary design and cost estimate, part of that, as I understand it, would be substantial public input. So even over and above what the Civic Center Board and the Futures Committee has already done. So that, that would, that would very well cover anything we could, we could possibly want as far as public input goes. So, for what it's worth, chew on it. Thanks.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still not clear why this needs to go back to legal and finance. If somebody can clarify what that purpose is to send it back to legal and finance, I'd, if somebody will stand for a question on that particular matter, I'd, I'd be very interested in hearing that answer.
We'll go to Joel Landeen.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Nordstrom, the, the title of the item on the agenda is Request to Identify Available Funding Options for Cost Analysis for a New Arena. It does not specify how much that you are intending to spend on that. There is a number now, and I would just say that the purpose of having items on the agenda is to provide notice to the public so those interested can come speak on it. And the question would be, is there enough information on the agenda that if somebody was concerned about the action you were taking, they would have known what you were going to do and come and speak on it? So the purpose, even though no one wants to necessarily see any delay, even a two- or three-week delay, would be to put it on the agenda so it was very clear that you are authorizing up to five hundred thousand dollars, whatever fund source you choose to, to fund it out of, so that people understood the action you were going to take and could come speak on that if they chose to do so. Essentially, it would be, I would just urge you to take into consideration that this is a very important issue for the city and that it might be prudent to cross your i's, or dot your i's and cross your t's, and make sure that you've got everything squared away so that you aren't in a position where somebody could challenge the decision if they wanted to do so. And just so what would be on the next agenda is, we would put on the legal and finance agenda that the council is authorizing, and I don't know that we need to specify a funding source at this point, but up to five hundred thousand dollars to fund the conceptual design. And then at that point, I don't, if you approve it at the next council meeting, I don't see how there could be any challenge to that at that point.
Richie, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm taking this under very strong consideration as what Joel recited here. It looks, folks, it looks like I'm going to be on the losing side of this one here. So this, this is what I would urge you, as the search committee, search committee or the, the review committee, is to take this opportunity to do some more research and come up with a, a, a support for this dollar amount that you're looking at. Take that time to bring forward any, any comments that you have. And Mr. Dr. Bailey, if you have a, an additional comment in this, I'd appreciate hearing from you.
If I might.
Because you're, to me, you're the leader of this group that, that needs to bring, bring this forward.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I wanted to point out a couple of things. The, what we're requesting is to pursue the release of a request for proposals to qualified companies to come up and tell us what they would charge to complete the next step, the feasibility and the costing information. As a community, we do have huge, huge questions out there. You all know the questions. Will it fit? Is that the best place for it? What will it look like? What will it involve? How many seats would it require? We've got these questions. We need to answer them. And as we look around, everybody might think they have the answer. Will it fit? Sure it'll fit. Someone with the background and expertise in facility planning, recreational facility planning, has to come in and assist the community to walk through those steps. What venues do you want? What's the flavor of this decade? We didn't know we have ice in this community twenty years ago. A lot of us wondered why we didn't, but we didn't. Today, it's one of the most thriving activities that we host at the Civic Center. What's next? Lacrosse? I have no notion. But we need a seasoned, qualified entity to come in and walk the community through those steps, and that's what we intend to do. Release a request for proposals. Will it cost five hundred thousand dollars? I don't believe so, but I don't know. Our cost projections from qualified companies are more in the neighborhood of three to four hundred thousand dollars. But until we release the RFPs, we don't know how they're going to come back. So the mention of five hundred thousand was a comfort zone. Hopefully, would not have to go to that extent.
Dr. Bailey, if I may interrupt, is that what we're considering now is the, the funding source that we're going to come up with. And to identify that funding source, what we're being counseled on by the city attorney is that this should be taking the opportune time to inform the public of where this funding source is coming from.
Right.
Yes, I understand it may not be as much as five hundred thousand dollars. But I think it's also important that the, the public be aware of what this money is going to be utilized for and how that funding source is going to be scrutinized, all of those...
Absolutely, absolutely agree.
As, as council is instructed, dotting the i's, crossing the t's.
Yes, we wholeheartedly agree. Actually, you know, fourteen months ago, I believe that the council approved and directed state staff to pursue where those purses were, where those pockets were, to come up with the feasibility study. We're here today to renew that request and to take action on it, with all due respect. We, as I, as we've mentioned, it's difficult. We've been asked, where should it come from? Come out and make a direct request, what pocket you want this to come from? We would leave that to the will of the council and to the people, because you don't want the Civic Center Board to make those decisions. We, we've entertained five, six, seven, honestly, in the last year, options that this could go.
Again, Dr. Bailey, excuse me for interrupting.
Please.
And I understand the, the, the part of, the steel goes up for the construction and the concrete prices are probably going to go up, probably because of, based on the information we received tonight on how much concrete is going to be costing us, and, and so that's going to be going up, and probably the cost of the copper. I understand that part of it as well, the copper wiring and everything, and I know you're going to be using an immense amount of it. But I think what we're, what we're really concerned with is, is this going to be enough information from tonight, gleaning what we're coming up with? Is that going to be enough information for the public to consume? And I, right now, I, I understand, I, but I'm, I guess I...
Right. Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. And, and we'll go back and provide whatever additional diligence need to be, come into this. But at this point, we're to, to, again, we need to refer to an expert organization that can lead us through answering all those questions. We're not asking for, for copper or steel tonight. We're just asking for the next step toward feasibility so that we can come back. We believe and support that this will be a referred issue. We do. And so we need to educate the community as to what it is that potentially they would be voting on.
And in my mind, don't look at this as a setback. And take this as an opportunity for further education.
We look forward to the...
Thank you.
To, to the next presentation and, and how we can assist the council in, in providing any information that we may have available. Thank you.
And we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion if I could, with regards to the comments by Dr. Bailey, as to authorize the Civic Center to release RFPs for, I don't know if they need a motion for that or not, but to allow them to request proposals, release RFPs to get, is that in?
I believe the city would release the RFPs.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. So the city to allow RFPs for the design proposals?
Okay, we have a friendly amendment. An amendment can be offered in a couple of different ways, either as a substitute motion or a voted-on amendment or a friendly amendment. And Steve, since you were the motion maker, you'll be asked whether you consider this a friendly amendment or otherwise. And the amendment that has been offered by Chad is to, is to repeat your amendment.
Just allow the city to release RFPs for design, I guess, designed...
Allow the city to release the RFPs for the cost estimates.
I'm a little concerned about that because I think when you do an RFP, you kind of have to know what your costs are, or what you're looking for. Now, are we going to, can we do that without identifying a range or? I have no problem with that.
Okay, the friendly amendment's been accepted, with our city attorney?
I would just say, I think that part of the reason they're looking for the funding is that even though you're not going to have to pay to request the RFP, well, I'll, I'll withdraw my comment and ponder that one for a bit, but we're looking for... I don't think frankly the RFPs are going to be ready to go out before the next city council meeting anyway. So whether it's, might be semantical, but to say that they're authorized to start preparing the RFP to go out, and then by the time that we approve, it comes back to you to approve the funding, I think that at least they aren't losing any time putting their RFP together. But it's going to take some time to put the RFP together for this project.
Okay.
You still have the floor? Thank you very much. And part of my, I guess, part of my reasoning for that amendment is exactly what you just said, allow them, give them time to, extra time to prepare their RFPs to, they can minimize the amount of time they have to wait to do that as well. Also, I would like to say, as the person who made the original motion to go ahead and fund the process going forward, and then it came out in the paper the next day that I said, oh, let's fund a hundred and fifty million dollar Civic Center, that was not the intention of the motion ever originally. I just knew that we were going to get to this point eventually, where we're going to have to find out what the costs were going to be. And that was the original motion, that was the original intent of my motion. Maybe I was, my first vision meeting, I didn't know exactly what I was saying when I spoke, but no one in the room corrected me. So I will say in my own defense, including the mayor or the finance officer or the attorneys. And so the idea was originally to just to go through this exact same process we're going through right now. So we'd have a, a, a cost estimate, we'd know what it's going to cost, we can move forward, and if it's going to work, it's going to work. If it's not, then it doesn't work. But that was always the original motion. It was never about Lady Gaga or anything else. And I, I think that it was kind of unfair the way some of the people associated with the Civic Center were treated in regards to that, as well as, as well as members of the council and the mayor, because we were just trying to do our due diligence. And of course, it came out, if I misspoke, obviously, that was my fault. But nonetheless, I think that we're getting to the point where we should be now with this. If we need a couple more weeks to do it, I, I'm, I'm for funding it now, but, you know, we need a little more scrutiny of it, and we want to make sure we're completely transparent here, the public understands that we're not trying to, anything underhanded or anything else. It's all out there, everybody can see it. So I'm comfortable with, with the motion as it stands. Thank you.
We'll go to Council President Jerry Wright, and then I would like to say a few words.
Let me clarify, first of all, Chad and Steve, what you're saying in your motion is that you are authorizing the Civic Center to request RFPs, and you're funding of the cost analysis up to five hundred thousand dollars with non-unencumbered cash being loaned to the Vision Fund. That would be the complete motion? Is that what we're doing?
The motion is to take it back to legal and finance with a friendly...
What's on the floor now?
The motion that's on the floor now is a substitute motion that has been, that has received a friendly amendment to, to go ahead and take this back to legal and, to direct staff to proceed with looking at the funding options, bringing forward their recommendations to the next legal and finance meeting, which is on Wednesday, October two. And then that was amended by Chad Lewis to proceed with sending out or preparing the RFPs.
Okay, that's kind of where I'm confused in stepping in, because I think, first of all, if we're going to go out for RFPs, we should identify the funding. And if we're going to, if the council can accept delaying for, until October, I personally have no problem with it. I don't know if the Civic Center has any problem with it. But I think we should be, be complete in the motion that we're saying that we're requesting or authorizing the Civic Center Board to go out for RFPs, and the RFP would be for funding of the cost analysis, and it'd be funded from non-unencumbered cash, loaned to... Well, how are we going to pay for it?
You don't have to pay for the RFP. They're requesting proposals, and a part of the proposal will be a cost to prepare the design. They will need some time to put together what exactly, this is what we're looking for. We want input into this. Then these companies that will, that design these arenas will put together a proposal, they will send it in. Then they will need the funding to pay for that proposal to be prepared. Then you will have a more concrete idea that will be brought back, and they will say, for what we're talking about authorizing now, this is what we think you should build, this is what your needs are, this is what you're going to build, that's what you'll need to pay for once they...
But I understand all that, Council.
That's, once the RFP has been selected. So if they send it out, they'll interview everybody, and then we'll need the funding prior to awarding a contract to one of these groups presumably to... At this point, my only concern was just that, just to make sure everything is done properly, that on the agenda, I don't know that we need a lot more information from anybody. I think the Civic Center, especially if you do go look at the link on their website, they have provided more information than the average person is going to have time to go through. So what we need at this point is just for it to be very clear on an agenda that you are authorizing up to X amount of dollars for this purpose. And then no one, I, I don't think anyone at that point can have any dispute if you approve that with the action.
Well, I still have the floor, and I'm still confused a little bit. If I might be, you know, kind of like the Civic Center, I'm aging and slowing down a little bit. I'll get rehabbed at the VA and places like that, but maybe that's where we should send the Civic Center. But I think the, the, personally, the proper way would be to identify the project, which is to allow the Civic Center Board to go out and solicit, request for proposals, excuse me, to do a cost estimate. But I think that this, in the fell same swoop, we should also authorize the funding so they know they've got it, and then we don't have to come back and ask for it again, and also clarify the funding source. Makes sense? Does to me. Now, if we want to refer this back to legal and finance to do it, you can vote, but I'm not sure we're gaining anything, because I, I, I will vote for it whether it's tonight or two weeks or a month from now. But I just think we need to do it so that we can get it done in a concise and proper, organized, fully funded, authorized way, without having to have them come in here and miss Monday night football. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make just a few...
Oh, excuse me. I would like, as council president, the mayor wants to speak, and if you want to hand me the gavel, sir, you've got the floor if that's proper. You can, you've been itching to talk, and I think you should get a chance, and here you are, sir.
Thank you. What a great discussion, and I appreciate all the work that's been done over the past fourteen months. And I think getting as much input as possible from the, the community is important, and certainly not thumb twiddling or a waste of time. I think it was a, an excellent endeavor to have, have this effort to seek input from all demographics and all across our, our community. This morning in an agenda review with council leadership and some department heads present, there was a discussion regarding what the expectations would be of our finance officer who was flying out later today on, on what needed to be prepared for tonight. And she is not here tonight, and she did not have her memo prepared, and she was, and she had identified several funding options preliminarily. she had identified several funding options preliminarily, and those, those preliminary funding options were the SAB 28 Fund, the Capital Improvements Fund. By the way, the SAB 28 Fund was my recommendation, the CIP Fund was her recommendation, and the undesignated cash option was, was in a motion that we heard earlier tonight. Another option would be, and I think it's limited, is some funding from the Civic Center. Until tonight, the public did not know what the amount would be in terms of the, the cost analysis. I think there was some discussion in the, in the, in the Futures Committee, so I take that, take that back. But in terms of, in terms of what was on a council agenda, the amount of $500,000 wasn't available until tonight. So I, you know, it's, Chad had mentioned earlier that no one had, had said anything a year ago, and, you know, and I've taken some criticism for that, and, and one of the reasons I didn't say anything is because when it came forward a year and two months ago, it was a motion by the Vision Fund Committee, which was a council as a whole, and I knew that it needed to go through the reiterations of committee and then ultimately to the city council. And so I figured it would work itself out in the committee process. And instead, what was reported the next day above the fold is, is that the city was going to proceed with spending a lot of money. And so I, I think that, while I appreciate the enthusiasm, I think that we do need to bring the, to allow the city finance officer to flesh out the, the recommendations, there might be more than just the three or four that I mentioned, and then bring forward the options. One option that I would throw out there that hasn't been discussed tonight is, is there is a special council meeting on September 30 for the purpose of hearing an audit update from, I think it's Kaitlin Thorsonson. And that agenda, I don't believe, has been published yet. And if the agenda hasn't been published yet, I believe that we, has the agenda been published?
No.
Okay. But we could theoretically put it on the September 30 special council agenda. The disadvantage to that would be that it's 12:30, 30 in the afternoon, but people, there would be only one or two items on the agenda, and people could, could, could make that. The advantage to that is, is that it's, it's a, it's prior to the next city council meeting, which isn't until October. So those are some options. Thank you very much for the discussion.
And I still have the floor, because I just let you have some of my time, so.
Thank you.
Technically.
May I have the gavel back?
You may have it back.
All right. Bonnie Peterson.
I just meant, I want to, to clarify, the council, would a delay to September 30 be okay with all of you? I'm going to vote on that, I'm sure, but I wouldn't, rather than waste our time. But, and I've also asked that we put together a complete motion for that time or an action for the council at that time, as I said earlier, to authorize the RFP, to fund it, identify the funding and so forth. So we have one complete package, so we're on and going. That's what I would like to see.
We'll go to, let's go to Joel Landine, our city attorney, and then we'll go to Terry Walters, store for Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just point out, Heidi has brought to my attention that there is a special council meeting on the 24th that's at 12:30. The special council meeting on the 30th is at 5:30. That's the Vision Fund. So I think you could move it to either one, although the 24th, I think we could still publish it in time and meet the, the legal requirements, but you have actually two options, I think, for a, a special council meeting to place it on.
Do we know if the agenda's been published for the 24th? It has not. Okay. We'll now go to Bonnie Peterson, who's been patiently waiting.
Thank you, Mayor, but I think you had said you were going to go to Terry before you came to me, and I thought he might have some wisdom. Or can I just donate my time to him?
I had skipped over you earlier and felt bad about it, so if you want to go first?
Well, I thought Terry might have some...
Terry, we'll go to you.
...stat information.
I'll do, I'll do my best. Here, here's my thought on it. In reality, if you guys send this back through the legal finance process, it's really not going to delay what's going to happen here, because we go through this quirky series of gyrations before we get a project built. And the next step in this is going to be, our staff will request authorization to send out an RFP. Now, what will be different about this, and we'll take some discussion, it'll take them, take us a while to, to work through everything on this, is we're really probably talking two different RFPs. One's going to be for the design services and one, I think probably for the construction manager at risk, which is probably the type of building process we're going to use here. It would not be a typical design bid-built process. So if you send this recommendation, as you guys have been debating for the last 40 minutes, back through the legal finance, it's really not going to slow down what we do. Public Works staff and the engineering division will work with Brian and the staff over at Civic Center, and, and we'll start putting together the details of what the RFP is going to look like, and it'll take us some time to do that. So I, to be honest with you, I don't even know if we would be ready to bring forward that recommendation at the October 2nd legal finance. We could certainly make an attempt at it, and if it doesn't make that agenda, it'd be the following legal finance. So it's, what you do with this tonight probably really isn't going to speed up or slow down the process.
Bonnie Peterson.
I would make, can I make a substitute motion? Are we already having too many substitute motions? A substitute motion to bring this to the special council meeting on the 24th.
We have a subs, we have a second substitute motion to bring this to the special city...
So the first substitute motion to go to legal and finance on August 2nd is?
Is now being replaced by the second substitute motion. First motion was to approve, and the second motion was take to legal and finance. And now this is a second substitute motion to take to the special city council meeting on September 24, which is what day of the week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, September 24 at 12:30 PM. Procedurally, we don't have second substitute motions very often. There is no room for any more substitute motions, and so this motion would have to be voted down if there is a desire for any additional substitute motions. Is there a second to your motion?
Charity.
We have a second by Charity Doyle. We are now discussing, try to keep it to the discussion, on whether or not we have a, a special city council meeting on Tuesday, September 24.
Can I keep the floor?
You may.
Thank you. I appreciate efforts to slow this down, so I think by sending it out to next week, it'll give time to notice for the people that do have a problem with it. I think there's a lot of support on the council for it. It's just wanting to make sure that our citizens get the proper notices that they, that they deserve. And so I think that would be in our citizens' best interest and ultimately in the Civic Center's best interest also. Thank you.
Terry, would you like to speak again?
No.
Jerry Wright.
Well, let's not send it to the 24th, we can talk about it again and again and again. So I would like to ask the motion maker that you clarify by the motion that this would be to authorize the Civic Center to request RFPs, and the funding for the cost analysis will be up to $500,000, and the funding will be identified and voted upon by that time, at that time, by the council. In other words, we're going to do it, get her done.
On the 24th?
Yes.
Yes.
I won't be there, I don't think, but I would like to see what happens.
Uh-oh, we'll need your vote.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to make sure, we were just trying to set the upper limit of the funding source and, and come up with the funding source. We're not, we're not approving the written letter or the written words of the actual RFP. We were just, they just come in here and wanted us to set the higher limit, and that's what we're going to do on the 24th?
Authorize it.
And, and, and give the public notice that we're going to establish an upper limit and we're going to name the funding source? We're not, we're not expecting to read the fine print of their RFP at that time, right?
No.
What, okay, well, because we spend a lot of time on this RFP tonight, so, thanks.
Any further discussion? Everyone understands the second substitute motion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries with one no from Bill Clayton. We need a roll call. Okay? Proceed. Thank you, everyone. We have motion to adjourn. We have motion by Scott and a second by Peterson to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned, 8:30 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Bonnie.